Hey, we're actually four, three, two, one. Time. I'd like to call the April 20th Select Board Meeting to order here in Brooklyn. The time is 6:30. Present in the room right now is Stan Noga, Bruce Mello, myself, Dot Maggio, Road Supervisor Mark Bills, and Alex.
No, no, this is Josh.
Josh. Josh, what's your last name?
Morelli.
Josh Morelli from Fat TV. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Is that double L?
Uh, I do two L's, yes. I had to think about my own name.
Right on.
You can ask that question.
Okay. All right, the meeting is called to a board. Are there any changes? Review any changes to the agenda, if any, Stan?
Yes, yes. I would like to suggest that we accept the resignation of the current treasurer and if we haven't, that in the agenda already.
It's on...
He, I asked him tonight, he said it's affected the date of the...
Oh, you know, I'm sorry to say, I, I think I put it in... I wrote it. I don't know what I did with it. I thought it was in Communications. I hand-wrote it, but I didn't type it up. I am sorry. So, uh, except... So under Communications?
Uh, if you'd like. That's, that's fine. Uh...
Okay.
Okay, and then...
My mistake. I, I did write it somewhere. Oh, yes, I guess. Select Board Chair Report. An email from Glenn in Dijon, that's uh, under number seven Z. Select Board Chair Report. Second page.
I don't, I wouldn't print that one. Oh, wait a minute.
Select Board Chair Report.
Okay, yes, 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 yes. You're right. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't review that appropriately.
And, and the other?
Yeah, uh... Let me see if I can fit this in somewhere else. I have a copy of the Leaf Blower Grant.
Okay, that's in there. I have that discussed under Reports, Road Supervisor area. We've talked about the Leaf Blower.
All right, I, we need to sign the, uh, MRGP Annual Report, which I prepared.
Is that, isn't that up here under New Business?
Uh, let's see, New Business.
No, MRGP is not. Okay, J, K. Um, M-R-G-P permit or report?
Report, Annual Report. Okay, and I think we're covered under six C for the other one.
Okay.
And a quick reference, all forty-five seconds or less in my report. Uh, let's see, just, uh, I'm, I've actually started a formal calendar of highway reports, which in the future, I think will vastly... Whoever's on the board, as time goes by, will know exactly what they need to do. It's a, I've already filled up a little over half a page. And it's, it'll be a big, it'll be a big...
All right, so under Stan Noga's Highways and Grants, we'll talk about your calendar.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Bruce, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I'll actually, in the previous agenda, never mind, I see it. Never mind.
Okay. All right, you with us, Peter, so far?
Well, that's Agenda. That's Set Agenda. Uh, never mind, I can do any other stuff for the...
Yeah, Set Agenda is at the end of the meeting, then we'll add to this.
Okay.
We'll, I'll be able to. All right, here now.
I'm sitting down with you, but I don't see anything about a Treasurer on the agenda.
Uh, no, it's on, I'm going to be talking about that under my Select Board Chair Report.
Okay.
All right, um, review and approve minutes from the April 6th regular meeting. So everybody has their draft meetings. Does anybody see any changes that need to be done on page, page one?
No.
Any changes to page two?
I didn't see anything on that.
I didn't see any, any changes.
None. Ooh, Peter, we're gone.
Peter, you're on a roll, bud.
Page four. Looks good. Any changes to page five? Any pages, changes to page six?
Dot.
Yes, sir. Bruce?
I spoiled your fun, dear. At the very, very bottom of page six, it says seventy-eight thousand dollars. It should say, uh, seventy-eight thousand four hundred. It should say seventy-eight thousand four hundred from renter, or less or...
From the lease.
From the lease, or whatever.
At page five.
Page, okay, page six.
I figured it was confusing.
Okay, you got that seventy-eight thousand four hundred from the lease. And page five, Stan, you have to go, what, what?
Yeah, the word you're gonna look for is M-R-G-T. It should be M-R-G-P as in Paul.
Uh, okay, M-R...
No, hold on, I still didn't find the seventy-four hundred or whatever it was.
Uh, it says Mr. Mello reported one hundred and fifty-eight thousand from ARPA.
Oh, there it is. And it should say what?
One hundred and fifty-eight thousand from ARPA.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight thousand four hundred from the lease.
Oh. So it says one hundred and fifty-eight thousand with the lease, seventy-eight thousand four hundred starting.
No.
No.
It should say, Mr. Mello reported one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars from ARPA, A-R-P-A.
Oh.
And seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollars from the lease, starting July 1st.
Got it.
All right. Okay, um, we did number five, we did page six. Any changes to page seven? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion...
Hold it, there was one other change after this one, but I stopped it.
There was a change on page five. Uh, it says M-R-G-T, Grant Annual Renewal. It should have been M-R-G-P as in Peter.
Oh, well, I will change that in the changes to the agenda as well.
Thank you. Any changes to page seven? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, April 6th, 2022, regular Select Board Meeting, as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended for April 6th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
I missed one.
Um, members of the public. Okay. Any member of the public coming in?
No.
Okay, um, nobody scheduled, nobody unscheduled. Next item on business is all business. Uh, we'll talk about the purchase policy. I gave Select Board Member a copy. I have something.
I just kind of thought.
What, you have...
For tonight, tonight, we're...
You got a look, because I'm...
Okay, I, I just had a thought for this evening. Because of the situation that arose a week or so ago, we have a different process for the recording of the meeting and forwarding it on. And we have a member of Fat TV here tonight. Uh, thank God, appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Uh, is, that something we want to discuss for future use and how we're gonna handle it in terms of the options that exist?
I think when we talk about vacancies, later on, we can bring that up.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Okay, uh, right now, we're gonna talk a little bit about the purchase policy. Uh, what I put in front of each of you, it says vendors in good standing for the town of Brookline, Vermont, reviewed on the April 20th, 2022 regular Select Board Meeting. Well, Peter, I can email this to you, so you can just listen if you want. As per the approved purchase policy for the town of Brookline, Vermont, sole source vendor, the legislative body may approve a sole source vendor for regular or incidental purposes. Approval shall be made annually at the first regular meeting of the legislative body held in the town's fiscal year. So this was tabled from then. The legislative body reserves the right to change sole source vendors by subsequent board vote. Selection of a sole source vendor shall take into account general availability of goods or services, quality and cost of the goods and services, and the ability, capacity, and skill of the vendor demonstrated under prior contracts with the municipality. Currently, those vendors that were renewed by Judy and myself that have a valid certificate of insurance and have, uh, ongoing, uh, work with the town includes A.S. Clark &amp; Sons for road material and assistance for colder installments, snow plowing, salt and sanding of the roads in the winter. Sursasamo Lumber for road material. Green Valley Carpet Cleaning for office cleaning. Why Not Work Property Management, inactive cemetery care, mowing lawns, et cetera. Bloom Enterprises LLC Property Manager, Management. Riverside Cemetery Care, Ball Field Mowing, Treework. Rattleboro Salvage Inc. Recycling. Triple T Trucking Recycling. Scott Bovat Plumbing. Coda &amp; Coda Heating Daycare Building System Care. Nancy Burke of Townsend Water Testing for Daycare Building, Water Testing. Don Pierre Electric and Larson Electric for electrical work. Everett Mark Builds for maintenance equipment rental as Road Supervisor. And Two Wire Guys for computer services. It is noted that Car Tree &amp; Timber, the arborist, has a, an expired insurance certificate on file. We haven't worked with him, uh, since last fall, so he needs to update that. And Kerry Borns, as a carpenter, his insurance certificate expires in June. So both Car Tree and Borns Carpentry will get a letter signed by me that will say that your certificate is expiring soon and if you wish to remake on this list, that you need to send one in. Yes, Bruce?
Um... Braincrack, big time. Um, the guest was put into this, to church, Perkins, something happened to tell you. What?
We, we don't need...
Rick Perkins?
Rick Perkins. We don't need to put that in?
We don't need to have all our deliveries. We don't have to see Staples and Walmart or any of that.
And what about Code Three and...
They're not a vendor that we would call on for, uh, to, to fix something.
Okay, but...
These are pretty much like, uh...
I got you.
A short, like if we needed to reach out to them quickly. Of course, if you wanted to, you can run it up and submit a...
And how about line well? Line well.
Do you have a contract with them?
Contract, well, they did work for us twice in the last year, and they had done work back in 2016 for us.
All right, well then, this, I'm gonna approve this, what we have. If you would like to email me any additions, we can, this is a live, a living document, you can modify.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir, Stan?
Do, does the, uh, board feel the need at all to, uh, list the gentleman who inspected this building, uh, for rodents and then the bats and the church?
God.
Uh, yeah.
A bait or whatever?
Well, no, it was, uh, it was, it had a different name, well, like something or other.
Okay.
Uh, from New Hampshire. Is that an appropriate individual? And then following up that, we made a number of calls, four or five, to different tests. We thought we might have a termite problem on the front wall.
Sure.
And when there was only one person on that list that came to look at it in a timely manner and was reasonable and helpful. I don't know if that's another individual.
Email me that, we can put it on the next agenda, you agree? Any of those, again, it's a living document, things can change, people top off, I can hit it off, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the vendors between A.S. Clark &amp; Sons and Two Wire Guys on those sheet provided, uh, to be on the current list of sole source vendors for Brookline. May I have a second?
Second?
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Discussion is, any additional people, please let me know.
Can you name those two vendors again, please?
Uh, from A.S., I gotta send you the whole sheet, but it goes from A.S. Clark &amp; Sons all the way down to Two Wire Guys. There are one, two, three, four, five, six...
Oh, oh, got it, okay. It was arranged, thanks.
Right, um, I'll send it to you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the vendor list as presented tonight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, this approves, is approved as is. I'll share it with the, the treasurer. Okay, next item. Um, I should have mentioned this earlier when we were modifying the agenda. Uh, we're gonna table the V M E R S discussion and join the project for current and future needs. At this time, we have enough on our plate and we don't have any full-time, per se, people that this would work with. We probably have to go back to discussing, um, People's United Bank for an IRA program later on versus the V M E R S. So I'd like to table this at this time. Stan, you have a question?
Uh, I, I, uh... Yeah, so we, we really don't have any concept that displays to who's tabled or it's not. Is that correct? And we're gonna look into both avenues, is that correct?
Well, we can, I'm not gonna, I was not going to suggest we continue researching V M E R S in Brookline because, uh, it's a type of municipal retirement plan and it's a little too complicated. We don't have anybody here full-time.
Oh, okay, okay, so, so, all right. I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know the scope of
Yeah.
V M E R S in terms of what they provide. I, I, so...
Yeah, they're defined benefit pension plan.
Yeah.
And it's different levels and subplans A, B, C, and D, different rate charts, um...
Okay.
It, it, yeah.
All right.
Administrative fees are included in any, any work that has to be done with them, um...
So it's a passive program with the LCT, correct?
No, I don't want that.
I don't believe that's a passive...
I thought Sky indicated at the last meeting that it was a, a V LCT passive program.
It doesn't.
I'm not sure.
Not sure.
Okay, all right, well...
I just wanna say something.
I agree with Kevin.
Uh, this all started last September with the exception of getting Mark and I thought a retirement, and I think we're getting way too complicated about it. It's really quite simple. We match his, whatever income, five percent of his income. I think we need to just try and get something, so, like, Guy was saying that, uh, it has to be due with our banks somewhere to initiate the payment from our end. Uh, we match his, 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 uh, five percent, our five percent. Um... Sorry, a little tired. And the way, what I had done, I had gone up to Mark's, uh, River Valley Credit Union, now P O two, and they were getting something going for him, and Mark's gonna go in and fill some papers we didn't go past at this point. The problem stemmed from our end that we couldn't, uh, we couldn't dovetail into, into River Valley Credit Union, so it has to go through our banks and we shouldn't. That's when things got geared off and, and, and if you know more about this, I'm good. But it's this V Mar saying, which has nothing to do with, uh, our bank, but, um... Guy knows a little bit more about the details of what we can do, what we can't do with our bank, but I think we're making way too complicated. Um, well...
All we need to do is sit down and get Mark to go to People's Bank, because once he decides what percentage of reduction, uh, percentage of contribution you're gonna make to your IRA, it will be matched automatically with the People's Bank into, into your account.
Up to five percent.
Up to five percent into, into the saving, into that IRA program. So that has to still be done. This is...
So it is an account that is able to be, uh, deposited into and the benefits to Mark at some point by both the employer and the employee?
Right, the employee, the employer will deduct from the salary the, the con, the amount, up to five percent
Right.
from the salary, and then we will match that. And it will go into the IRA, and it will be like any other IRA.
Surround figures, it was fifty thousand dollars you had.
It'll maybe go there.
Be twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it was, it's setting my time.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, okay, I was just curious, because I know when I was employed by someone who then implemented a, a program for retirement, there were a very limited number of programs that could be used for that particular purpose, and it really condensed it, uh, you know, down to a few options in terms of vendors, banks, whatever. So I, I just was, I, I just was inquiring. As long as with that has been clarified and defined, they do have a program that allows that, then I'm comfortable with that.
We will double check, double, triple check, and I'll get you on, on the, if you're wrong, we're on, sure.
They took it out, we're very, very...
Or People's Bank I'm talking about, too.
Never mind, we'll reset.
So, to be discontinued. So we're not going to continue with the V M E R S.
Correct.
All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, the local emergency, emergency management plan for review and approval to be sent to the Wyndham Regional Commission. Each of you should have in front of you a photocopy of this year's plan that I worked on and updated with the current numbers. There were some basic changes, phone numbers, and some people move arounds in here. Uh, and maybe a change in, um... That's it, pretty much, phone numbers.
True.
And I added some information. They did ask about, for example, something that was sort of new on page five. They talked about, uh, services for warming and cooling and, um, services notes. Where can they people cool off and, uh, no, that's another email, excuse me. Uh, if people need to go to an emergency shelter, I put under notes that they must cross over the Green Iron Bridge or the river to get to new things. So if there was ever a catastrophe where the Green Iron Bridge was destroyed, then we shall only be able to go to Athens or Thompson. Wouldn't be able to go to the New Brook School for our, for our emergency center. Okay, but, um, just take a few minutes to look at that. This is due May 1st, if we can, um... I have last year's copy, if you'd like to see that as well.
It appears that the utilization of the lower level of the daycare is no longer a site.
It's not considered an official site, no.
The church is, right.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The church is.
I don't have it as an official site.
I don't, I don't.
It's not, it doesn't have any, it's not...
Does that have facilities?
It's not a care for facility for, for emergency sleeping or anything of that sort.
That's what this is about, yeah, okay, of course.
A fire drill, yes. For the daycare, you can, they can go over it, but it's not, it's not a place for people to, to stay and eat and sleep. Except for the mice. Lots of mice.
I want to sell.
Sort of there.
I like, I like music. I'm good with hair.
Not using a phone book to double-check numbers, I accept that.
In terms of the...
Oh, I, I went through those numbers so many times, so...
I did, yeah.
It was because of this storm that we were able to so quickly respond to the, uh, storm, the storm 4621 in July.
Okay, what do we need to do?
I'd like to...
Make a motion that we set the, uh, April 20th, 2022, Town of Brookline Local Emergency Management Plan, uh, presented by Dot Maggio, the Chair of the Board.
Seconded, Bruce?
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's been moved by Stan and seconded by Bruce. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the local emergency management plan adopted tonight, April 20th, 2022, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll have the plan, and I'll send it over to Wyndham Regional tomorrow. Okay, next item is the adoption of state roads and bridge standards and ex, to, and to execute the compliance certificate.
Yes, I downloaded this offline today. Uh, I went through it and completed where appropriate. I do have a question for Mark, I need Mark's assistance here, the board does. Uh, on the form, page one, there's a, a section that indicates that road and bridge standards that we're adopting, and it has number one, municipal road standards. And it requires that we indicate yes or no. In this case, the first, the second column, we don't have a choice. We have to say yes, it's the hydraulically, hydrologically connected road segments. The third column over, there are non-hydrologically connected road segments. And I don't know if from your experience, we have to say yes or no, or whether there is no option because we maintain those that are non-connected in a non-Vermont road standard way or not. Uh, you have any idea whether when you do something that's not hydrologically connected, whether it's done to the state standards or not?
Boy, uh, before I, I give a definite yes, I would like to look into that a little bit further, because we, even the class four trails, we're supposed to keep them, you know, up to a certain level of
Standards.
Standards. So I'm thinking that pretty much everything we do is supposed to meet standards. I can't think of...
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm just reading something further on down. There's a, a double star for looking at an explanation below. And it, it does say that, even if we say yes, it says, uh, adoption of standards on non-hydrologically connected road segments does not indicate that these road segments are then subject to the municipal roads' general permit. So it looks like if we say yes, we're not gonna hurt ourselves and get ourselves in a bind.
I, I'm willing to very hard to say yes.
Okay, okay. With that, uh, that, those were the only choices, and if you, if I pass this around and you review it, uh, you're gonna see that I circled all the yeses as, just kind of outline. And the thing that was brought to our attention by Megan Brunk of B Trans was on a page labeled seven six, because it comes out of the orange book, uh, for roadway construction standards. We had to put depth for the base and then the additional cover. And she suggested that, and I'll read it to you. A new or substantially reconstructed gravel road shall have twelve inches thick gravel subbase with an additional six inches top course of crushed gravel. That was something we don't have a choice, and that's what the standards are from state.
Right.
And the other thing was, all new or substantially reconstructed paved roads shall have fifteen inches of thick gravel base. And again, we didn't have any choice there. This wasn't filed, and it was blank in the file cabinet, and when Guy showed it to her to talk about it, she said, you gotta put those numbers in there for this to be a valid and be in compliance with road standards. So, uh, there's appendices to it, A and B. Uh, I, I talked to Megan today, and I told her we were gonna operate on this tonight and, and get it done. I neglected to ask her whether we need to send those appendices. I'm gonna, I suggest I'll send it to her just so we don't have any options, any, uh, any need to follow or any future phone calls. And essentially, there, there's two documents. The one that says we are adopting it, which has two pages, but you sign the, squeeze your signature in the lines, the spaces are short for the adoption of the state standards. And then there's this other document where we are certifying that as of this date, we adopt this set of...
So it's a straight, made two motions?
Uh, well, I, we could, but we could just say there's two documents a part of this. I'd rather be safe than use your suggestion.
Yeah, but I...
So I'll make a motion that, uh, as I, I'll pass this around for your review. I apologize for not getting to you sooner for your reviews.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, this document is the actual adoption by the Town of Brookline of the Vermont Road and Bridge Standards. Uh, and, uh, so I make a motion that we adopt these and sign it.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. And during discussion, we'll review it. During our discussion right now, we have a motion by Stan, signed by Bruce. Right now, we're, we're reviewing, review and sign.
Second.
And I will email these to, uh, that, yeah, that's the first document. Here's the appendices if you wanted to record it with it.
Okay.
It's a lot of gibberish and... It's a lot of gibberish and.
That goes without saying.
And.
Sign that, same you were signing off on.
All right, um, if usual, all right. All right, um, we have a motion now to second to all those in favor of approving the. Uh, this is for.
The motion to accept the Vermont Roads and Standards in Brookline.
Motion to. The motion to accept the Vermont Roads and Stan Town Road and Bridge Standards for the municipality of Brookline. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, Stan through, you sign.
Thank you very much. The next motion I'd like to make is to adopt uh, that we, uh, execute the certificate of compliance with town road and bridge standards of the state. Uh, by indicating that, uh, we certify that our adopted standards do meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the state of Vermont. And then we further certify that we do have an up-to-date highway network inventory, which includes identifies, location, size, deficiencies, condition of road bridges, et cetera, which we do have on file. Uh, so I pen printed your names under the wine bar. You can sign, I put the date on it, and is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion. Okay, we're in discussions, review, and wait. All right, we have a motion that's seconded to approve the certificates, prove and sign the certificate of completion com- compliance with the town road and bridge standards network inventory, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, certificate's official.
Terrific.
Woo hoo.
Thank you, now we'll be able to get those who are listening in the public on this, uh, an additional ten percent off in our our match amount, so.
Yes, that saves money.
That's that saving money.
Well, that.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, um, is, so the status of class two A. Class, discuss status of class two and bridge work report, is that what we just signed?
No, no, that was another.
Sorry.
Yep.
I need to, I need to hear what Mr. Noga said about ten percent, what?
Oh, yes, um, when there are highway projects funded by grants and the state of Vermont, and sometimes on occasion federally funded uh, by the select board in behalf of the citizens of town executing this document, it will, uh, increase the amount of funding from the state and or federal government by ten percent. So what that amounts to is that the town ends up paying ten percent less of the entire cost of a project. So it's the benefit of the town, it it means someone else is gonna pay an additional ten percent, instead of paying eighty, they'll pay ninety for the, uh, or or with seventy, it'll now be eighty that they pay, so it's a reduction in the amount of financial responsibility or match that the town of Brookline will have to, uh, put forth in the future because we executed this.
Better, thanks, thanks.
To save us money, yeah. Thank you. So, next item was, uh.
Class two.
Class two and bridge work report. I, uh, emailed, uh, both Archie and, uh, uh, Mark, uh, looking for, uh, their input on what potential bridges and or class two highway work we would address in this report that was due or is due May ninth of every year. And Archie emailed me back indicating that, uh, there is nothing in a condition or status that requires that we, uh, apply for a grant for either of those two categories. Um, period.
Okay. So there's nothing for us to sign or anything?
There's, there's nothing to sign, there's nothing since we're not even applying.
All right, so another year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item, is, are you finished, can I move on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, item E, discuss findings regarding request for proposal bids electronically or by email. Uh, it's been determined that if we change our purchase policy and include that elect that bids can be received electronically, um, we can then add that into our R and P publications when we put it in the newspapers and we would just say, uh, uh, bids can be returned to select board chair electronically via email, um, between April twentieth and April twenty third, I'm just saying, to be opened on April twenty fourth. Okay, so if we go forward, we might need to modify, we can put that on here, just modify our purchase policy to include that.
But can, uh, Bruce, I don't have any objection to doing all this except for one thing. Um, when something is done by mail, it's somebody that's just postal, post office. Or some other shipping entity.
This is just whether can we do it, we can discuss when we put the policy up for the next month.
Okay.
To discuss it, if you don't wanna change it or go, you accept it, you don't have to.
Well, I think, I mean, it's expanding the opportunity for for somebody to make it easier for me to do it. What I'm just saying is on our end, how, I know on a fax situation, give you an example quickly. In a fax situation, fax is sent to us, the original person gets a notice it was fax. Okay, last week, it just so happens, I went back for five times to Grace Cottage and and Lebanon, because they weren't getting it. They weren't getting it, until I finally realized that it was getting stuck in their fax machine or something. I still don't know exactly what happened, but Christie from, not to get too long-winded, at Grace Cottage, I had to physically go up there and ask her to do it and call me back after you called Lebanon and tell me you got the referral.
All right, she said that.
So never did, she never did, and I called Lebanon. So this is the problem that we can have with a bid, is if we don't have any way to prove that the bid came through, like we do the United States now, which is.
We can discuss that while we're.
Okay, don't just bring that up, okay.
Vermont. Yep.
Oh, that's.
Yep, I I would put it on the thing for another agenda, but that would be part of of changing the purchase policy, or not.
Hmm.
Or not.
I'd like to see it, listen to it.
Okay, discuss the status of construction inspection bids from the Zoom meeting that was held with Margot Gia of Wyndham Regional on four eighteen two twenty two at eleven AM. Stan, I'll let you handle that, I was there, but.
Okay.
You're the heavy lifting here.
Well, I don't know about that, it was, it was nice, it was nice that we both participated, but because there were some interesting questions uh, in regard to comments and questions that we had, it was, it was definitely better, I thought, I appreciate the fact there were another set of eyes and and two heads rather than one, it's always a good policy.
Well, yeah, works.
The the bottom line is that, uh, the conclusion was derived, and there are lots of reasons, like we've gone for half an hour, but I'm not. There, it became apparent that at this time, it's too costly to, uh, pursue this now. Uh, Chris Hunt from B Trans indicated that the bids that he's seen come in are high, excessive. And, um, uh, he, his vote, as we were going around, the four of us on Zoom getting opinions, were that we defer until next year. And there were some issues regarding costs that still were looming out there that were not pinned down. And in light of the fact that I, we we didn't get an answer specifically of what the management fees by Wyndham Regional Commission were. There, my question to that effect was answered by, well, we're gonna be renegotiated in June of this year.
Contract.
So it was avoided.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, the 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 bottom line, the most scary part of this, I think, that the public would be interested in knowing, is that the range of money that we were potentially gonna have to come up with for our match on this.
This is for the salt sand shed.
This is for the sand and salt shed, uh, where the town garage is.
Right.
Was gonna range from the town having to come up with a minimum of about forty, uh, eighty-five or eighty-six thousand and potentially a maximum of a little over a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And that range was just too large, too scary a number for a small town. And so when the options and discussions came up about there being uncertainty about numbers, uh, and this not being an opportune time because of the cost of materials and labor, we 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 got the nod from Chris that I believe we have to execute this, if I'm being complete in my presentation, until the middle of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. So we could act on it next year, we could act on it the year after.
Okay.
Uh, in theory, uh, and, uh, there's one other aspect of it, that the the bid from the onsite inspector, when you looked at it in terms of labor costs, um, there were, there's a segment that was at their base, which I think was for the, for the, the lesser of the two job, there's a supervisor and not a supervisor, the non-supervisor was working at an hourly rate of ninety dollars an hour. And there's time and a half we figured in on, and when I went back and rechecked the numbers after the discussion, that number that they provided this with, and I'm not gonna mention it because it is a bid item, was, is actually higher than what they stated. And supposedly, the supervisor is supposed to be managing the whole thing over the three phases, the pre, the construction and the post. And he only had hours for the pre-phase, not the the existing instruct or under construction and not the completion phase where he checks all the documents that being sent, so there there are dollar amount shortages all over the place. And the one other thing that was a real kicker to me, last, uh, uh, August of two thousand and twenty-one, somebody at either B Trans, NRWRC, put numbers together as to what they expected this thing to cost. And two years ago, I think it was two hundred and eleven thousand for the construction phase. Most recently, as of last August, that number went way, 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 way high, a little around the three hundred thousand dollar range. When I brought it up to, um, one of the individuals in the Zoom meeting from outside this town, um, they said, basically, don't pay any attention to that number from last year. And I thought that was awful strange, and I just felt, I didn't wanna be, we could, we can put it off and get a vote simultaneously next year or or the year later, next year or the year after, both at the same time for onsite inspection consultants and for the construction. So we know both numbers at the same time. We'll know whether or not the town should proceed or not, and then we're not hurting ourselves because the grant is open. And in the meantime, I should say, we finally got the amended grant, where the two grants that we initially had, one for a hundred eighty-eight and one for that ended up being one oh nine six, are now combined into one grant. And I put the documentation in the file for anybody who wants to look at it, so that now the number is one and we only deal with one. Uh, and it's not a matter of keeping track of two.
Stand order on the town story, are they, are they tabling this one?
We're the one that's telling me, so we, there's nobody else this year in this area who's gotten to the point beyond where we are, so I can't answer the question.
Really?
Yes.
We're that good, huh?
Yeah, I thought you were crazy, you said that. No.
No, huh?
All right, so.
Well, I'm saying you've done a great job. Yeah, real, oh, wow.
There's a lot of detail work that Sam pointed out, um, and I was just very happy just to 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 see how everybody worked together and there was sort of a consensus, so at this time, I would like to make a motion to postpone the posting of the construction bid R F P for the salt sand shed until next year and to revisit the construction inspection bid presented by John Turner Consulting at the time the construction bid goes out. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, I'll read my, they can read my motion again, all those in favor of postponing the posting of the construction bid R F P for the salt and sand shed until next year and to revisit the construction inspection bid presented by John Turner Consulting at the time of the construction bid, when it goes out. Uh, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, all right, the motion is approved, we are going to postpone the, uh, salt sand shed project for this current year. With the understanding that the grant money will be available still to us next year. Okay. Um. All right, adjust as, okay, now, item G, adjusting the salt sand shed costs, we we can, we can nix this, item G.
I just, if I could, if I could just simply make another point.
Sure, go ahead.
I I mentioned numbers that were parts of the total project and and that the town might, if we, if we don't, if if the numbers that were recommended by, uh, Wyndham Regional were used, we were, we were gonna have a potential for eighty-six thousand on the low side and a hundred and thirty-two on the high side. The the line or sentence that I didn't include with that is that that upper range, it assumes that some of those higher bids are included, elevating the entire cost of that sin and salt shed to approximately four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
Ouch, 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 yeah.
Speaking of, speaking of ten of those sheds, and that'll.
So, so when when Dot makes that motion, with that consensus that it reached there, it's, uh, that that's why, that's why.
Yeah, it it was, well, we thought it was only gonna be something like forty thousand dollar match, it was like, go for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But now it's close to a hundred and thirty thousand or more, so it could be. All right, um, discussed work and time for the salt and sand shed, I wasn't sure what that was, uh, Stan.
Yes, um, in the actual bid itself, that Ron Bell, the the pre-construction and and engineer person put together, in section two hundred of the special, uh, exemptions, he stated in this very first paragraph that the town is responsible for taking down all trees onsite that were a part of this project. And that was a puzzlement to both, um, Chris Hunt from B Trans and Margot Gia from Wyndham Regional. Because it wasn't something that either one of them had seen in other bids or noted in other bids. And they asked me if I were were true on, uh, you know, if if I were really saw that, I said, yes. And 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 so, uh, Chris drew drew up some contract that was similar to ours that's going on elsewhere, because it was convenient for him, and he read the last paragraph of that section two hundred, and that paragraph says that the contractor will be responsible for clearing, grubbing, and and there's a couple of the terms that are relative to cleaning a site. And he says, that's what I'm used to seeing. And then he said, can you send a copy of the area that you're focusing on that seems to contradict that? So after our meeting, I think it was yesterday, I looked it up, I found it. I I sent a screenshot and sent it to both Margot and Chris, uh, to see what their response would be, whether in fact it is, because I was looking at it in terms of if we were able to do it and if we had the staff, if Mark were interested, we could have that work done if there's trees available to the public who wanted them for firewood or whatever and help a community member, that would be great. But we could take the cost of doing that, using the state labor and machinery charges to 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 take part of, reduce the match in money that we actually had to come up with in cash. So it would assist again the town, saving a little money in a way, but, uh, so I brought it up as an option for the town to realize. And and it turns out that we we don't have an answer, it looks like there's a sentence in there that either shouldn't be or or one one is gonna be taken out.
Says, to be clarified.
Right, yeah, to be clarified, yeah, so it's it's not a completely dead issue, but it kinda looks like it's twenty.
All right, so, good. Again, thank you for finding it, I was like, yes, you found it when you sent me the screenshot. Okay.
On that same topic, and I was.
Certainly.
Wondered if, uh, is, is it included as part of the construction for whoever gets the bid to dismantle the old structure? Is that written somewhere or is that?
That's a really good question, I I'm not sure.
I don't know if you're, um, you know, if that is something I was supposed to do or had to schedule or it's, uh.
Boy, that sounds.
We'll leave it up for now.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah.
I I will, I will eat, I will, uh, I will take a look through that same general section and and I don't remember seeing that. But I didn't think to raise it as a question which says to me that either A, I missed it, or B, there is an answer.
Yeah, maybe you must, and somewhere, well.
Okay.
But we did talk briefly that some of that decomp, if we, if you deconstruct the current shed, that might, some of it could be reused for like a like to cover the gravel that we have parks on now. So it's about recycling the materials that are in the current shed, so we could find out what the plans are, we can work out from there at another time. So we could find out what the plans are, we can work out from there at another time, but. Okay, uh, anything else? All right, on letter I, discuss the need for an administrative, for administrative assistance, um. Yeah, so we're down to three select board members. We have, each of us have a lot of additional work that we're picking up. Um, and so some of the administrative work, not talking about taking minutes, Peter, because we love how you. Are so accurate with us, but we're talking about.
Something different.
We're talking about helping pushing some of these forums through and, and, and making contacts and, and doing some of the. The legwork and advertising and things that, uh, it gets to be more than just civic duty. Kinds of things that our selectmen came aboard to do. So we wanted to talk a little bit about that. Bruce?
Volume is a beautiful thing, I think we will.
So I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I do that a lot. Volume, volume's a beautiful thing. And when we have our meeting with the lady, uh, about the treasury, uh, position, treasury position. Friday after we've culminated all of that, I would like to ask her if she knows of anybody that. That she knows of, we're looking for a number of vacant positions to fill with highlighting the fact that we need an administrative assistant. Assistant, and since she's from a town in Newfoundland, she's got a lot of people, maybe she can come up with some ideas of people that might be. Lord, that we might ask or tap into for help. Because of, of like, except administrative assistant. You've done the vacant positions multiple times on Julie's website, I mean Julie's website. And have really gotten nothing out of speaking, right?
Pretty much, but I have another list to go out again.
And you also put it on the front porch forum too, I think.
Oh, before, in, in the past, yes. I haven't put anything out in the past, not the weeks.
And got nothing from. So I think word of mouth is a beautiful thing. And I, I'm thinking that if we. Talk to people one number one, like, that's one prime example, this lady is coming Friday, see if she's got any ideas. She sees people in Newfoundland, that's a definitely more populous area than what we have over here. Maybe we'd have to, need to some help over there.
Stan?
I, I basically concur with that thought. However, we haven't actually ever advertised for an administrative assistant.
No.
So, uh, giving, nothing against any other town, but since we are. Employed and, uh, elected by Brookline citizens, I, I would like to look, look at a solicitation first. In our town. And then, uh, if it doesn't work, or in conjunction with the discussion that we have later in the week. Do it that way so that we don't ever get confronted with someone and say, you didn't look and Brookline first.
Yeah.
You know, and that, that's important to me as a person.
I'm, I'm assuming it's already done because, because Dot had already put in there for other vacant positions, like you say. Administrative assistant has been brought up. Okay, and that's a different position, so.
Administrative assistant, we're looking possibly, we'll have to discuss what it is he or she might do and how many hours we're looking at. And, and, uh, probably most likely it could be done from home or phone call, you know, but, uh, it is something to. That we'll need to get out there. So we do agree that there's a need for administrative assistance here in Brookline, um. And I guess we need to move forward on this. Yes, Stan?
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I'm thinking of, uh, uh, if there are individuals, not necessarily adults. That are, that are individuals who just got out of high school or in their senior year and they get a low-class load. And they can work an afternoon, two or three days a week, uh, and give them a head start in the profession they might be looking for. Um, if that would even.
I know what you're thinking.
Open up possibilities.
I know what you're thinking.
You know, there might be some people who said, no, this is not going to be an avowed class. But then again. Widening the pool of prospective individuals, it may, it may just hit the spot of someone else who. Who wants to get into business for the first time, find out what a little bit of it's like. Uh, and, and be, you know, making phone calls, sending out approved letters and, uh. And calling each of us as need be to, to go over whatever it is that each of us might be responsible for. We just. You know, I'm thinking that, is there anything else we can stretch to, to try to get someone from Brookline?
I, I'll also have to say that I did, I did last year at some point get an email from, uh. Uh, University of Vermont, I think it was, where they were asking, are there any. Municipal government type of jobs that an intern would might, we might accept for, for internship? And at that time, we said no, but I, I could certainly look back in my mail for, for college intern. Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, so, so before I move on to the next item, which should we, so. Should we discuss we have a need? And so we'll just put it on the agenda again as we develop an, an understanding after this week. Of how, how deep that need is.
Well, put it on.
I, I'm planning on.
I think you're, I think you're.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you're right. Putting on Julie's website, front porch forum, and discussing with that lady Friday. Think we should open it up. Now, obviously, I know you all feel the same way, as Brookline comes first, somebody from Brookline with all the position and their qualified finger.
Okay, my question is.
Uh-oh.
What, I don't know what to tell people we want yet to put it out there. I don't have a description yet.
Right, so we have to develop.
And I don't want to say, oh, we can leave it.
I have a brief suggestion at that point is, um, I'm looking at, I'm spending at some days twelve hours.
Woo.
Working for the town. Uh, today I've spent almost entirely from nine o'clock until five fifteen. Working on town stuff with twenty minutes to go down and turn the weather on, but that's irrelevant to. So what, what I, I'm, I'm going to try to do, you know, not, not maybe even having an answer for this Friday. But looking at what I did today and what things are those that would have been nice to have someone else do. There are some things that I had to, to call because I had questions that needed to be followed up if the first answer they gave was yes. So, um, and I think if maybe we all do that maybe for a week or so. Just to see how many, how many of these and how long did it take us? And so we get some idea from our own experience, just what it is, and better able to describe to the, to the candidates. What, what they're going to be doing and how long they can expect it to, to be for hours per week and, and so forth.
I think personally considering, I think you two really carry the brunt of the weight of all the clerical thing more than I do. Um, so it doesn't, but, um, I guess what I'm trying to say is. I don't feel at this point that I need to dip into that interest. Because if I need help with what I do, I can reach out to nobody over there. He helps me out a lot, um.
Mark's been complaining all the time.
I know.
Yeah, he's been complaining. I'm about to talk to you about that.
Exactly. So anyway, I, that's great. So it's all, it's all some kind of a, um. Position, and we'll go from there.
Right, yeah, but I, I don't put twelve hours. I've been, I'll put a good.
You put it out.
I don't put four to six hours on, on a couple of days a week. It's, it just, anyway.
We need help.
We do. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the item K, which is the MRGP report. Annual report for signing.
K, I must've got an old, outdated version.
Oh, wait, excuse me. I forgot one. I forgot item J, vacant positions that need to be filled. Okay, still it'll need to be filled. We have need, we have a need for one or two listers. We have a need for one or two planning commissioner members. We need to, we have a need for a rescue aid representative. We could use many more volunteers to help with fundraising and activities associated with around schoolhouse. And the Brookline meeting house. Um, we have two select board seats that are open. Uh, the nine-one-one coordinator, I looked over, that is also vacant. I looked at that. I do think that that's something that I wouldn't mind picking up. We also have the treasurer's position. We have the delinquent tax collector's position. We have the, uh, tre, the, um. Of public funds, the holder of public funds, the.
Trustee of.
The trustee of public funds position. We hope that the three. Financial positions might be something that, uh, a new treasurer would pick up. The treasurer, the tax delinquency and the public fund depositing, uh, might be something that one person would pick up. Because Dot handled those three items before. So, uh, we'll have to see with that. So pretty much I'm looking at listers, planning, rescue and volunteer and select board seats. Uh, Stan, you had mentioned that you would be interested in picking up the Wyndham Regional, uh, representation from Brookline?
Yeah, in, in light of the fact that there are grants that I've been interacting with them on. This involvement, attending meetings may facilitate, uh, a bond of, you know, familiarity. And, and facilitate in that fashion in terms of interaction and stuff.
Right, so that wouldn't be one that I would put out there, but, um, I would put the other ones out, including. But I'm going to hold on to the administrative assistant in this until we have a little bit more time to talk, so I'm not jumping the gun.
Okay.
All right, but those are some of the, those are the positions that currently vacant at this time. All right, uh, item K, which is an added agenda item, the MRGP annual report. And Stan, I guess you have that as well?
Yes.
All right.
This is a report that's, uh, required to be completed, uh, every year. Uh, by April first.
It was taken.
How's that working?
And, uh, yeah, right, I understand. Um, and so, uh, it only needs to be signed by the select board chair. Uh, I have taken the liberty of filling, filling it in. Uh, and I, I rather than take the time of. You know, me doing that unless you feel necessary. There's a, there's a, the two sections that need to be dealt with. Are, uh, number five through seven, which is a phone number and email. For the person that would be the contact for the, uh, uh, A and R Division of Watershed Management. Which is what this all was about. And there's a name for an additional contact. I don't know who would want to volunteer for that.
Is, is Mark on that at all?
No, he's not.
Is that something that you've done, is, have you worked in conjunction with A and R?
I have because generally if we get a. Project that requires working in the streams, streams, the rivers, we have to. Get a permit to, uh, make that happen, so.
So it'll be E, Mark, Bill, if you're interested?
Sure, yeah, uh, Archie's been very helpful on that. At, at times we add, but I do add to, uh, involve. Uh, totally in that.
If I need to call, they would call you, but it goes to Archie or me as well.
Yeah, sure.
That makes sense since you're the one that smoothes the roads.
That's good, I think. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
So, come on. So it's just phone number, uh, and then, um. Basically, there's a checkbox and, and I, I maybe should say this. If, there are, uh. Uh, there's, there's huge spreadsheets of what our conditions of our roads are, et cetera, et cetera. I, I walked, picked up the page, picked it out, checked Brookline, and there's columns all the way across, base, status. You know, et cetera, et cetera. And one of them is, is we have the annual report, and of course, that's the able to know. And essentially, the box that I checked, just so you don't have to review this and say, hey, I didn't look it up on the internet. It, it says change this to MRGP compliance status. And in parentheses, it says fully, partially. And does not meet or completed road segments. It's just acknowledging essentially. That those categories are in the report. It's not saying that we're going to fix everything that's negative or anything like that. So if, if the, the highest authority in town is the person supposed to sign us, and that is Dot. So other than the phone number or email, I didn't know if you wanted to use the town email or the town phone number or your personal, so I left that in.
All right, so I should sign it under my printed name?
Yeah.
And then we'll put Mark's.
Usually it's over the printing, but.
Okay, yeah.
It is.
All right. Sign this here. And today is April second, yeah.
Checking to.
And then. Okay, so it's Brookline Select Board Chair is me. And, oh, I should put my phone number down.
That's what I was thinking.
And I'll put your phone number here next to it.
It doesn't ask for the phone number of the other contact person, but.
What's, what's your phone number?
Uh, home or.
Whatever you prefer, two five seven one?
I'll go with the, um. Eight oh two. Two five eight. One three eight nine.
Okay, that's our phone, yes. All right, very good. And mine is zero two three six five seven oh seven two, and.
I'm staying on how you're ending it.
I, I hope so, Mark. I mean.
Bruce.
Bruce, yeah.
We're something by.
All right, so take a look at this. I think it's signed properly.
All of these things that you're signing tonight, I will copy before I even, I even put them in the broker file over here so that. Uh, they will, they will be there as evidence and proof. Uh, I'm also, as of keeping copies of the signed documents. On my hard drive at home, so, and so that it'll be available. And, uh, that we've, now that we've signed this. It will eliminate the possibility of them saying we can't get any grants because we didn't file our annual report. Which they could possibly do.
Uh-huh.
It's filed.
Uh-huh.
It's fine, it will be fine.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item, uh, reports and updates, uh, road supervisor. I'll let, um, I have culvert leaf blower. But do you want to talk about some, some of your work first or fourth? Yeah, what you want?
I'll just say that, uh. Since our last meeting, uh, all of our town roads, um, have been scraped, graded, uh. They are, uh, ninety, ninety-five percent, uh, dry. There's still some wet areas that kind of ripple natural effects of very wet, uh, surfaces. And, uh, but everything has been scraped, passed the ball and, um. I, I'm going up to take down the, uh, winter road code signs, but, uh, the day I was up there.
Probably got run over by people flying down there.
It was like middle of summer, there was so much traffic on the road.
So as much as you didn't really consider people, we are.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as heavy trucks traveling, I would say there's still room. For the roads to ride for, for, for heavy trucks, but, uh, yeah, the roads are holding up everybody right now, so. We're on the, we're, we're moving out of the South Seaboard.
Right.
Yeah. And we've had some heavy rains and, uh, some wind and. Just out of my road checks, picking up, uh, picked over debris, uh. Couple culverts that were cloudy, uh, leaves, and I was able to shovel those and correct the water. And everything else is just pursuing, uh, some of the work. My phone calls. So I'm not sure if, uh, you want to go on to that or?
Well, um, does the culvert leaf blower or?
Yeah, yeah, I just.
All right, go ahead. So I have the information here in case you probably read it that you sent me or.
Sure, you, you did get my email then about the, uh, leaf blower?
Yes, it says, um. Yes. That was HP, hold on. Fairfield. Oh, the, okay, you got a quote from H.P. Fairfield. They have a leaf blower just like what Newfoundland has. Its cost now is nine thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. Delivery is extra, however, you offered that you can probably pick the leaf blower up to save on the, uh, delivery charge. And you say it's fuel-injected.
Yes.
Three-year warranty on engine.
Yeah.
And ten years on the turbine. All right, so. One of the things, when we went and saw that machine, and we, we took pictures, and I have pictures of the engine. And you just talked about some of the other features of that machine that Newfoundland has. It is more than what our grant list was originally. They were thinking that these were going to run around seven, eight thousand dollars, and we would get a grant of about sixty-seven hundred to cover it. So this, the difference between, here, you can figure this out, and the difference between ninety-two, ninety-five. And say six thousand seven hundred is what, Bruce?
Oh, that's not the number.
Oh, what is it, six?
The, 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 the grant actually has a number of five thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, so five thousand six hundred ninety dollars of which, okay.
That is the amount we receive. That is the amount we received. The grant says we expect, they expect the town to put in an additional fourteen hundred dollars.
Correct, okay.
Bring it up to eight thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, that's what I.
Or I'm sorry, uh seven thousand.
Yeah, seven thousand, seven thousand something.
Thirteen ten.
Alright, so but this is now nine thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. This is up several thousand dollars from what, when we got the grant. Cause every piece of equipment has, has gone up, so.
Are thirty-six hundred ninety-five dollars that would be needed to plan by the town.
Right.
What was that?
Three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars.
I'm watching.
Three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars would be the match that we would have to put in. To buy this leaf blower at nine thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. Uh the difference between ninety-two ninety-five and the thirty-six ninety-five is the grant amount that we're getting.
Got it.
So um.
Uh by six hundred.
I believe one of the reasons for the price, after talking with the sales representative. Uh there's a number of towns that have purchased the same model and. It had the same engine, this Kohler. Uh gas engine and it had a carbureted uh engine and they were having quite a few problems.
This is fuel injected.
And so the company that builds them stepped up to the EFI.
Good.
Fuel injected where as uh Stanley mentioned, it's way better on fuel than starting.
Um, so we're gonna get an EFI?
We're gonna get a fuel injected one. Well, this is the price of ninety-two ninety-five. It's the new version.
The version, old version sounds much, a lot plus?
Well.
Did I make a mistake?
Early when the grant.
Do what I'm aware of.
Came out, the, the price was lower, but things have been modified. Um so I think that's part of some of the reasons the price is up. That inflation itself.
I don't wanna get too much in the weeds in this, but just in respect of fuel usage and fuel quality. You have to realize now that you, that you, uncle Joe, President Joe Biden is getting ready to, he wants to include more ethanol in gasoline. You and I really need to talk, we've talked about this before. Any gas that we store or keep on the property should be, should be treated, treated with C phone. Um especially in like now, that's, it's fifteen, it's ten percent, it's ten percent, it's ten percent of the point, if. State of our own, again, he's gonna run for Senate.
I mean, yeah.
Welsh?
Peter Welch, at one point wanted to increase, uh he wanted to increase it to, to fifteen percent. And all the small business people in the state went absolutely BS out of it. So it didn't happen. But what I'm driving at is if we get to that point, that's not a fuel injection, it's a great idea. If we can get that, that's over the end. But still, we should consider um treating any gas we store. Because we'll have issue. As you leave any fuel into it, uh Ron Rehman's been with us since nineteen sixty-five. He says that he has seen gas turn because of ethanol in under thirty days. In under thirty days. It's not bad, that's all. Go ahead.
I, I have a question. Uh Mark, did he email you specifics into your email at yourself?
He did, and I'm, I'm just looking for, I thought that I had forwarded that to you.
I did, but I'm just, the reason why you're looking for that, the reason why I'm asking is if I could, uh I would. Take the statistics and send it out to at least two other vendors. So that we can say that we have researched, cause there's not too many vendors that have it. Alright, so just, just to show you, I'll just forward it to you. Hit the dots and hit send file. Through Gmail. Gmail, yeah. Look at that. And we'll do it to stand over here, yeah, and Bruce, yes.
And what he did say was uh. He has six of them on order and three of them are spoken for. And um if we're interested, uh and I told him that we'd be talking at a meeting. Uh that he would save one for us if we, assuming we could get back to him if we're ready to go with that. But I also, again, looked on the website of these other uh Fincher.
Yeah.
Uh Oregard. And I couldn't find anything that wasn't power driven by a tractor. You know, had a power kickoff attachment or.
Thank you.
A different design, and I didn't see the motorized individual unit.
Yeah.
And so I didn't uh. I haven't pursued, I didn't call to specify, but I.
I probably should.
It's a B three forty-five, I think it's a model number. And it is exactly what was over in New Thing. So they, they do have it. In the pictures of the models that they have, I had to look for it too. Because they seem to be focused on other means of moving it around than on a trailer or in the back of a truck. But they did have it as of last resort. I think the model number was a B three forty-five.
Yeah, the pictures have a similar.
B four thirty-five, one of, one of the other. But after Mark is through with the presentation, I have something to add that may simplify this whole thing.
Alright.
Well, that was uh, I also um, you know. There was, topic came up of maybe uh there's some used equipment available. I wasn't sure if the grant would uh, would help us on something used. I'm not sure.
How are usable products made?
I, I didn't uh.
We didn't research on this, we've never.
We, until now, we hadn't. I have the research done now. And asked the questions that needed to be asked in that regard, because I thought we, that was asked to do at the last meeting, so.
Part of twelve hours a day.
Well, yeah, 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 so whenever you.
Um, yeah, I mean, we're on this topic, Stan, we might as well follow through with that.
Okay, the, the, the leaf blower grant is so weak in terms of its requirements. The only thing it seems to focus on is after you've got one, we need three things and it outlines that. In light of that, uh Jeff Nugent, Wyndham Regional Commission was actually managing the, the source of the money. The money comes from something somewhere else and he didn't say where, nor does it say it in the grant. But in any event, uh we can buy whatever we want. If it's for a price that's less than the grant amount of fifty-six hundred dollars. Whatever that price is, we pay uh twenty percent of it and the grant will cover the remaining eighty percent. And what's not used just doesn't get used, it's available for the system to use elsewhere.
So we can, we can buy.
They can do anything they want in terms of get that. He said if you go higher than, you know, significantly, of course, he says.
And we have to cover.
You're responsible for anything over the fifty-six hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
He did say, if I may continue.
Oh, you can.
He, he was really helpful because I, I, I heard some stuff that made this more sensical for us here. Uh I, I related to him the cost that I found on site last time I looked, ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And he said, well, I'll tell you, Stan, everyone in this area has got it from Fairfield. Uh Athens just got one, eighty-one hundred dollars. Dumbarton paid either five thousand or fifty-five hundred dollars. Westminster just got one and they paid fifty-five hundred dollars. Which maybe they're either used or they're not the EFI carbureted though. Cause that's gonna add a little bit there for them. And uh, and he, but not, not, I don't, I don't think so.
No.
So he said, um, he said, you know, he said, it sounds like you've done some research. But he said everyone else has focused it on Fairfield's. And he said that's where they've all gotten on the street. And if they've gotten six on order and three given, that means only three left. I don't know how long it takes to get them from the factory, but it's something we probably ought to move on. He, he said one, he named the town, I'm not gonna say who it was, cause I don't know what their purpose policy is, but he said, I sent them the data. On a day of the week and he said, two days later, they've submitted the invoice and the paperwork necessary to show that they purchased it already. He said they got in their vehicle and drove over and picked it up.
This is Fairfield to you?
No, uh concrete, is it somewhere up there?
It's in uh, concrete, yes.
Okay, it's not Fairfield's, yeah. That's a big dark company, okay.
Now, uh one of the options is, this one is mounted on a small trailer frame and I guess you can. Have it without the trailer frame, so that might be some of the price differences. Um Town of Stratton uh has the same mechanical setup with two turbines and. It's a double turbine. And uh. They bought it, uh it's one of the uh models to choose from and. I'll just say they're gonna, everybody has a different application, how they're gonna. Use it on a piece of material is. They now have their wheel excavator and they're gonna mount it down on its remote control. Yeah, they had to have somebody who can start a little bit of attachment to be able to move it around, but um.
So you're saying if we had a real excavator, we could do something similar to that, if it happens, a person else gotta do that?
Yeah.
Right, but we also.
I mean, I was just, I'm just putting it out, if they got a.
Put it out there, yeah.
And uh, cause I'm thinking ours can go either behind a pickup truck.
Uh huh.
In the back of a pickup truck.
On a research.
Or on the front of the grader, I think it'd be a.
Be able to see where you're aiming is more, is important.
Yeah, certainly, and a piece of machinery is.
So the grader or an excavator would be.
Right, or a wheel excavator.
Right, and you did see the pictures, right? I sent you the pictures of these?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what New Thing didn't have, how they?
Okay. They do have pictures from uh the maker.
Well, what do I do, go for, oh, let me, let me ask this. Uh the way this is presented, you're looking at thirty-six hundred ninety-five dollar match based on a model that's ninety-two ninety-five, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, and we're assuming that that has everything, every bell and whistle too, including the trailer and everything else.
Okay, and it seems like something that you need and you all are doing a great job, you all are doing a great job analyzing, figuring out what we need. Obviously deferring to best to the man that's gonna use it. Uh what I'm, what I'm gonna talk about is where we're gonna get the thirty-six ninety-five from. Um and my assumption is you're thinking about taking it out of the road fund. But from what I understand is road funds hurting right now. Do I understand all that general?
I don't have any treasury reports to say, the road funds per se hurting right now, but the town, I mean.
Twenty-seven thousand, was that the?
It's the, the, the um, road budget is not completed.
Okay. Okay, I'm kind of, I was gonna say, if, if we're in a real pinch.
These could do our budget.
That's right.
Right.
Because to me, this is deceptive stuff in my opinion.
Yeah, there, there are other topics, I think, that we can easily acquire. A fifteen or twenty thousand dollars legitimately under ARCA. That would add to our highway fund, but I haven't brought that up yet, so and I don't know if it's. I, I'd like to at some point, but it's not on the agenda and so.
Yeah.
At another, at another.
But how do we move forward on this?
Well, what I'm gonna have to do is I'm gonna take a look, it hasn't been emailed yet because we're not in a good zone. Um so we'll take a look at what HP, what, what Fairfield, what's it called?
Fairfield. HP Fairfield.
HP Fairfield sent, and I can revise, take that data and send it to two, two other places?
I'm not even sure that's necessary, I don't know, because.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay.
Because Jeff said that they, they've looked, those, some of those other people have looked and they, and they, we ended up going to Fairfield's.
Anyway.
Anyway, and when I looked it up, there were only those four or five from the eastern seaboard, from South Carolina to Maine. And as far west as Indiana. Uh and, and so when I looked at those, they, they're, I think the only two that really showed having these things. Is, is Finch Turf. Which closest one is in eastern Massachusetts. And Fairfield's.
Okay.
There used to be Tenco up in uh.
Yeah.
North of Brooklyn, but I guess they.
They dropped out.
They get away with the line.
Yeah, their airport equipment and plows and that's a, so it's only two. And, and we've already got a, we already, and I just, and the one that's in Massachusetts. Is the num, is the one that I got the numbers of ten to fifteen thousand.
Really?
So I suspect there's a market, there is a market that can handle that kind of one.
A lot of golf courses are, are using.
Exactly. So the bottom line is, I think, we really only have one vendor. So I wouldn't spend the time or the effort to look elsewhere. If you've got something that satisfies our given requirements.
Right, we have to get it, it hasn't come yet because we're in the spot, but by tomorrow, it will by the time I get home. And then we'll all have it and we'll proceed on purchasing.
Move. Move.
Alright.
Go away.
So, so are we, we're essentially waiting for something to come over the internet, right?
Yes, so Mark handed the thing from HP, which, which has all the, the bill.
Okay, you're gonna, you're sending it to him.
I sent it to the boss.
Four, no, E F, Warren G.
Uh huh, okay.
They are.
And then we can just move.
So i- i- it.
We don't wanna wait till, uh on day four, right? We wanna do this before.
Well, given that we, you know, again, there's stuff that we can log on the internet and look at. Does that trailer that it's on have theums or is it just?
Yeah, no, no, it's already.
It's already, yeah.
I asked him if, uh, you know, if you delivered and he said. We can, it would be a decision, extra expense, um they would have to truck it over. Uh I asked if it could be towed on a highway, he said he didn't recommend more than fifteen, twenty miles.
Oh, geez.
So.
Trailer, yeah.
Yeah, it's uh.
So you really couldn't pick it up though?
I, I have a trailer that could be.
Oh, a trailer that's been driven on, no?
Yeah, it weighs like four hundred and seventy-five pounds.
So is there any reason? Is there any reason why we couldn't vote to do it? Is there anything that's coming over the internet from that item that Mark was kind enough to get and they were kind enough to give Mark? That we need to look at and decide upon? I'm just trying to say with some words.
Is this a new piece of thing?
Yeah, brand new.
And you're sure it's a fuel injection?
Yeah, I'll let you read if you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, alright, open it back up again and I, I could, that would be fine. I just, I don't know, can you get the internet?
You can, you can.
You look tired, you end up late.
Oh, it's long days.
Alright, so this is a Buffalo Turbo model, D T C K V six Cyclone. Debris blower, uh twelve-volt wireless system with remote engine startup and stop, no choke is required, and it's a throttle control. Uh it's a handheld wireless transmitter with push button control like, uh like we saw. Order resistant, it's twelve-volt, three hundred C C A battery, a forty-eight inch frame length with a skid mount. A seventy-five foot overall length with nozzle, skid mount.
Seventy-five.
Five inch.
Oh.
There's two dots.
Thirty-five inches.
Seventy-five. It's like, oh, a hundred and twelve inch overall length. Twenty.
You're getting what you pay for.
A twenty, uh twenty-eight inch frame width, uh forty-eight inch overall width with the wheels, thirty-nine inches height, six gallon fuel capacity. It's a Kohler gasoline engine, uh does not have a choke on it. Adjustable throttle up to thirty-nine RPMs with good fuel economy uh when, when the, it's running below thirty-six hundred RPMs. It has an aerospace polymer nozzle. Uh it has a pro, twelve inch approximate outlet size and eighteen by eight point five. Dash eight tires, both on trailer package with adjustable pitch. It weighs four hundred and seventy pounds, the shipping weight is five sixty-five. Uh shipping box size, if you're gonna ship, it's fifty-two by thirty-six by forty-eight. It has a machine warranty of ten-year manufacturer warranty and a Kohler engine warranty of three years. Uh code is valid for thirty days and um to give you the item number. And the um list price twenty, ninety-two ninety-five, no discount. Um and if it's paid by, it should be. The expected to be purchased by the fifteenth, nineteenth of May for this vote to remain good. Now, again, this is the same, this is what he got.
This is to us.
To us.
And we have to, I can comment?
Well, it says here, well, it's thirty days.
On the press.
It's a thirty day, now if they, if they sell it, it's something, something else.
They can sell, they can sell, sell, sell. They can sell, they don't.
Correct.
Okay, and it's brand spanking.
Yeah, good warranty.
With warranty.
Okay, now the only glitch that I see of that, when we get a bit comfortable, it said it from the time. Is that he said from the time, we're gonna have to put all the money out initially. And then we need to fill out the paperwork. From the receipt of the paperwork, Jeff said the payment requirement or the amount of time they need to get a check to us to reverse this. Is uh four to eight, four to eight weeks, so one to two months after the fact.
Well, we, I have it done in this fiscal year, it ends June thirty, so we need to get this forwarded this week.
We can figure out where the money comes from pretty easy, cause we've got seventy-nine thousand dollars over the, listening to.
Yeah, we can move, it can be moved.
Yes, it can move.
Remember, so. Remember, it's a two, two, two from, whatever Samara used to say, quid pro quo, I don't know.
No.
Certainly. I I heard somebody else mentioned that in other towns, uh. When they're the running the budget, uh they end up borrowing money. In anticipation of receiving the.
Yes.
They could do that too.
That sounds like Samara.
I don't know if that's uh something our towns ever consider.
I think we can loan ourselves the money though.
Yeah.
We're we're okay.
Yeah.
We're not.
We're we're not talking about ten thousand dollars, we're talking about three thousand dollars.
Right.
Well.
Sorry, for the upfront cost, it's my thousand dollars.
All up for five thousand dollars. For thirty to sixty, said sixty days is the ninety-six.
Ninety-two ninety-five.
I wonder like how, how much. Our town credit card has available, if that could be used and paid back. And they gave you thirty days and.
We don't know.
Uh wow, wait, uh, well.
I'm not sure the amount.
Uh we're not talking a large amount of money here. But yeah, I don't know what kind of what you got going there. But if you're talking nine thousand dollars, it's a little bit of, hmm, let me think about that. It would be easy just for Rob Peter to pay Paul until they get the money coming in. We're only talking thirty-six ninety-five, we really physically have to come up with in that sixty to ninety.
That that's what the our matches, but we do have to come up with the payment bill.
Right, I know that.
Alright.
We we can take it on our, we'll put it back in, whatever, we can work that out later, we can't work that out later.
So the question is.
Without, as if we lose the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, if we, so it so it sounds like you can be locked in right away.
Yeah.
When would be the next, next AP warrant would be two weeks from tonight, or uh what's March?
April four.
April four.
April, okay.
You don't want to be told.
Well, the check can't cut until then.
Wait a minute.
That's right.
What's the deadline on the date?
Why now you're doing, sorry, what's your, you're gonna.
Uh, June thirtieth.
This is a deposit.
So there is room for.
Oh, yeah, just this is a deposit search to find it, so correct.
And he said it's the receipt of the equipment.
Yeah, I think that.
Clicks the starting point, and and so if we get it before the thirtieth of June, we beat it, we've done it, okay?
Oh.
Uh so if we can get it. In May, will be that further ahead of the demo.
Okay.
I'm thinking we might consider in any way having a special meeting next week.
Uh huh.
Could this be something that you to put on an agenda for a special meeting next week, or having one briefly?
Fifteen minutes or whatever.
Yeah, right, well, that would have Melissa, so.
Sure. Posted twenty-four is.
Okay, alright, I am going to make a motion that we uh uh. Table the purchase of the of the uh culvert leaf blower until the special meeting which will be held. Let's let's make a date right now, we'll hold a special meeting on behalf of all of our ducks in a row. Uh today is.
Twentieth.
Friday is the twentieth?
Yeah.
I understand, we're prepared to deposit that some to finance it, we all, and we would get that money back.
You're confusing me, don't have.
Well, I'll make it simple.
I'm just trying to pick a date, well, we can meet together, so we can just.
Okay, well, we're, we're happy to get sold before that date. What I'm getting at is, if we were to put a deposit on it and change our mind, we're not gonna lose that money, not just for the note currently. I've done a zillion of these over the course of my life. So also this is a question to the, uh to the company, Fairfields, H R F, whatever. We're willing to give you an extension, what do we want for deposit? To hold for a week until we decide on it, and then we can move forward.
Well, if you've decided on it, it's a matter of funding. Because of the, because of the requirements of the select board authorizing a purchase.
Okay.
I I suspect we can do it at a special meeting, and if Judy's willing to cut it sooner, we could have it cut. I mean, you know, and it'll just appear on a warrant later on as having been approved. I suspect, I don't know how that works, that's a question we we would need to ask the the assistant treasurer or treasurer. But but uh.
If we're muddling things up here later, that.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
I agree.
Technicalities, that's.
Yeah, alright.
But the.
I'll make it a motion to table the purchase of the culvert leaf blower until. A special meeting which will be held next week, we will decide on the date, leaving on in this meeting? Am I screwing this up now?
Well, no, no, no.
You're screwing up.
I- i- if it really wants to, just pull out their calendar, look at next week, we'll know if we can do it.
Relax.
Alright, I don't have my calendar.
I've got the twenty-seventh for some reason with special meeting and a question mark, I'll re- answer that.
Or.
Week from today.
Or, or, this isn't gonna take long, correct?
We're gonna talk to Melissa, uh Melissa Ed, we're gonna do two things in the meeting, we're gonna need to have to do, so it shouldn't take long, no.
Why don't we do it after that meeting with Melissa?
Friday?
Alls I'm getting out here, going sales, they'll sell, I think.
That sounds like a special meeting on Friday, that's just an information.
Oh, that's right, sounds like a special meeting, Saturday.
Monday, Monday?
So.
Monday or Wednesday, I think.
Wednesday I got a meeting, I'm gonna tell you about that.
Monday, I have a release too now.
Decide later on.
Alright, we can work it out.
Alright. So.
To be determined.
Alright, a little mode.
To be determined. Exactly.
Okay, we're going to postpone the purchase, the plan for the culvert leaf blower. Until a special meeting which will be held next week at a time and place to be mentioned before the end of tonight's meeting. How's that?
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Number two, over the rail mower release. Uh I just wanted to let you know that I did complete the over the rail mower release for twenty twenty John Deere chapter. So that we can mow for the town of Brookline, uh between, will be delivered on June twenty-seventh and.
June seventh, please.
Uh it was a one week rental, so it is the twenty-seventh.
Oh, it's the seventeenth.
Fifth of July first, so it'll be here.
Okay, typo on there, it's a one week mower, it will come in June twenty-sixth, seventh, twenty twenty-two. And be picked up on July first, twenty twenty-two, um. Uh the contract says the rental rate is set at four thousand five hundred dollars for the week, no discounts for multiple week rentals or weeks with holidays in them. They'll drop off the machine at eight P M on Monday and will pick it up, the tractor by eleven A M on Friday. There will not be any restrictions on usage hours, but no, no guarantee for forty hours, it's the customer's responsibility to get the desired hours in the timeframe renting. So I have given this, put it on the town clerk's desk with a note asking him to fax it to our insurance companies. So that they can provide us a certificate of liability, and then it will be sent back to HP Fairfield, so that's in the works at this time.
Um.
Yes, question?
Can you say, I think you did, that this is the last year we can run it over the rail mower?
Yes.
We more can more talking, they're not necessarily now.
Talking to the same sales representative that that uh.
Lisa.
Is working on the the.
Before.
Leaf blower. He, we talked about, I said, oh, I'm renting the. Over the rail mower from your company, we have for a few years now, and he says, oh, this will be the last summer that's available. Uh they're doing away with that program, so I'm gonna be available.
Okay, how much they cost them?
Uh they jumped from three thousand up to, uh thirty-three hundred up to forty-five hundred.
Okay, I know, I'm talking about the buy.
This is a track.
Or to buy a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh.
Here, this is not the same.
Just a level of the.
That's a try, that's a different thing.
Right.
Okay.
Specifically just for, there's no bucket, no dash, dash, and it's just uh.
For a tractor.
For the real mowing, right, yes. They do sell used ones, you know, once they're done renting. I can't really get so many hours now. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, next item is discussing the wheeled excavator, we're gonna rent it during fiscal year twenty twenty-two, so we won't rent the wheeled excavator until the fiscal year. Uh July first.
Correct. Yeah.
And. Uh we're looking at the six weeks of lease, lease to own possibly, we'd like to negotiate with that again.
Can you get a similar session?
Um.
Can I tell you?
They did the same thing, there's there's such a shortage and big demand, and he sold. I'm I'm certainly told me seventeen models.
Oh.
And he was down to three. And so we played phone tag a little bit, and I did talk with him. And he's supposed to be finding one, I gave him the dates, that I'd like to start on July tenth. Because I'll be mowing first week of July.
Right, I'll be busy, yeah.
And then have a good chance to move on to the next project after our fiscal year starts.
Yeah, okay.
So July tenth for a six week window, uh rental, and I told him we can talk. Well, whether we need it for an extra two weeks or.
Maybe we could actually have a zoom in on a meeting and we discuss it specifically and rather than have to show up here, but we can ask questions about the attachments and such.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
How last year, if I remember correctly, when we met out here and looked at it, they were pretty much in your. Scene of, oh, why didn't you buy one, or what, you used to buy?
Oh yeah, they're they're always, uh, you know, they they give you.
It was a woman, wasn't it?
They give you help, um. I was renting from a girl who no longer works with the company, she she went elsewhere, um. And you know, like everybody, there's shortage on help, and so they got a new girl, but I, this William. Who uh I did speak with, um. He said that he can answer any questions and I talked about it, and. If it goes there, they offer a seventy-two uh months purchase. There are lease companies, it's everything, we're waiting for another year, but um. But their particular J C B warranties and all that is seven.
So they have lease stock to the buyer, they spot.
Yes, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to talk to somebody who have all the options that we better have.
Whatever, cover up.
Sure, and you know, and another thing, I was thinking if we just rented it. And uh so I went online and and I can do it, look up excavator brush hogs. And up comes all these attachments that'll fit. Various different size uh excavators. And uh there's light duty ones for the small machines, medium, heavy. But uh so the brush hogs range anywhere from. Let's say a thousand dollars up to like ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, we can get.
We can own ones that have any duty. But what I thought was, well, if they weren't too much, we could get one and when we rent the machine, use it. As the machine goes back, we get it again, but you know, those are just.
I'm confused about one thing. He owns a mower, um uh leaf cutter, I, grass cutter, is going on a what? It's not going on a wheel excavator.
Um.
It's on a machine.
What's that? What machine is it going?
Oh, uh, what I'm saying was, if we had a wheel excavator.
It's a machine.
It could, it could accept this brush hog so that we can do our own mowing.
That's right, I think I read that. Right.
I don't have to rent another machine.
Right.
It would be.
And we're needing over the rail mower, what would be?
It would be an over the rail mower, it'd be bigger.
We wouldn't be spending nine thousand dollars a year to mow the grass.
A year.
We could buy a piece of equipment that would fit on a new. Wheeled excavator that could do the job year after year after year after year.
And pay, and the paybacks will, and the paybacks one year for last year.
As as needed.
And and perhaps the uh leaf blower, leaf blower could. Then see.
Fit on, be retro to be fit onto a.
Real excavator.
Onto the excavator.
We could call the guy from Stratton that was going in.
Okay, well, I would like to move on a little bit here, um so Mark, we, we'll we'll look at this paperwork, we'll talk about this in another.
Okay.
But yes, we we wanna sift that up, I think that's, this is the, this is the year for roads. Okay, uh discussing timesheets, now I know you got your timesheet in, you said you can't get it in.
Yeah, yeah, I heard, uh, it's coming back to you.
Okay, um. Okay, we need to, everybody needs to be a little bit more regular on it, is there a better form? Remember I gave you a different form when we were doing FEMA stuff, maybe we need just to, I I like the way you essay, you you write out what you cover. And that's wonderful, it was very helpful for FEMA, but for just for payment, it may need to just be revised.
Uh I was. I was thinking that as long as I have my.
Date and hours. Journal.
If there's questions, I can show you and just make it simpler.
Yes.
And uh, it, cause it, I have to sit down, it takes me a long time to sort everything with. Machinery sorts, the smileries, and what road, that's what, so if I just had like a, almost like a time card. With vague descriptions, and if you want detailed descriptions, I can produce it. Uh if that, if that'll work for the town, that would definitely be a whole lot easier for myself.
So we need to actually develop a form for you. And I can sit with you and you can say, well, these are the kinds of categories that I, that that we break it in, so why don't we plan on doing that? We'll we'll develop a timesheet so it you get this done on a more timely map, continue with your journaling, but to hand something in once or twice a month would be.
Yeah.
Expected.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
I've been thinking about you and thinking about that very topic, and I was just thinking about, I was like that today. Uh setting something up on an Excel spreadsheet. But I wasn't sure what you needed or not, and I don't know if you wanted to tie that exercise together, because I noticed your notes are very detailed. And if you had something, instead of writing all that out, cause I'm I'm looking at it saying, I wonder how long it would take me to write all that out?
Yeah.
And that's gonna be a drag.
Oh, yeah.
And more than one way, you know?
And I and I do it on my own time, I haven't ever built a town, I don't know what a timer takes to do this, which.
So if you had something on a clipboard that says date, location, you wanna say house name next to the house?
Yeah. Yeah. See, I carry a.
Arch, star, and whatever, whatever you want.
I have a pocket calendar, and then I write it, and then I have to go page for page and rewrite it.
Yeah.
And then I have to go back and do all these details, so it's it's very hourly time consuming.
And I don't wanna force anything, I, it sounds like you got an idea, and that may be, may be a great idea, but I just, I guess the thing I wanna say is. If I can help in that process, don't hesitate to ask.
Alright, I, you know, there's so many times I I have enough left.
I have.
Where I look for the rainy day to to utilize for that, and they may not. Match up with my schedule and keep looking it up until I get that right day, so that's, I apologize to the town for that, but um. If it was simplified, it would never have been like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that's that's the plan.
That's a great attitude, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
And eventually we'll get a little computer station in here, you can come in and add your time if you need to.
Yeah, I'm a little.
Stuff. Yeah, that's all.
Hold it into the computer.
Alright.
Uh could I just uh? I'm not sure if we're done there, I I had one other thing on the culverts.
Go ahead. Yes, oh yeah, I know.
Uh wait for Bruce, um.
That was the purchasing?
Yeah, I was asked uh the board for uh. The uh permission to pursue some extra culverts, so that when we do get the execution. And um so I. I had talked to W W Building Supplies, the state, uh they hold the state bid, whatever the state's uh gets for a price. It holds that price and delivers to all the towns. Um we talked about how much we normally spend in our budget, and uh knowing that this is um still. This clear and start over again till July, we talked about spending somewhere near half of the culvert budget. So I priced out, I need uh two three foot diameter culverts for up on Button Mountain. Um for the bulk of the uh. Flood uh tore up the road, and. These one twenty foot length, three foot diameter culvert is now a thousand thirty-nine dollars.
Wow, last year was nine, we thought that was nine, a thousand thirty-nine?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
And I asked, it's Chris Milrick, it's the salesman down at W W, and he said. They're ordering now, the delivery will won't be here till the first weekend July.
Hmm.
So um so I said, well, I definitely would like to order two of the three foot diameters. And I said, I'd like to get four of the eighteen inch to go with our inventory. So I came up with, uh he he broke it down, I forgot how much it is per per lane of uh both of these culverts, uh. And I um put together, it came to thirty-five hundred sixty-four dollars, maybe cents. Is uh what I ordered. And but that won't be here till July, so.
So that will be invoiced in July?
Well, I believe so.
It'll already happen till August, yeah.
Okay, alright, good.
It'll already happen, the way W W is, if it's invoiced in July, it probably won't see till, till August first.
Well.
Well, that's not my.
Yeah, I mean, it would be better if it was later, it's for.
Yes, fine, do that.
And uh, fuck it, add to, slut of an idea. And um the only other thing I had on my list to uh talk about was I did receive a call just to clarify some. Uh one of the O'Briens, from O'Brien Baby was on site looking at our uh R F P bid specs. And just asked me a couple of questions, details, so to do that, just one person.
Interested.
Uh, interested and, um, appreciate doctor. That's ending that to me.
I sent out the, uh, to the newspaper and I also, uh, mailed, uh, the R F Ps to the two vendors that we use most often, O'Brien Taping. And, um, uh, they even brought us a cover letter and then the the two bits, so if they didn't see it in the paper, they were at least, you know, and.
So. I don't know, I'm not sure if this is, uh. Better connect, I'm not sure if their company works with various, the, uh, R F Ps.
It's, oh, this might be the company that looks, follows, uh, construction, that carbon reporting on the above mentioned project. These are bidding projects, they try to follow to see what the cost for, but doesn't say, oh, the blacktop repairs, so. Yeah, we need to just respond, it has not been awarded, or I can help you with that later on.
Okay. All right.
All right, okay, yeah, we have a little order there, you wanna forward it to me?
Sure. Yeah.
All right, we'll forward it, okay, so what you do is you hit that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and I have to hit forward and then you put, start putting my name in and then. You just you just have to hit the arrow and it should go, it's sending.
Okay, so so three dots, your email address and.
Yeah, that. Right, if you hit whatever, you just hit the three dots, hit forward. And then you can start writing my address and it goes and when we hit the app, hit the arrow sentence.
Yep, very good.
All right, um. Anything else, Mark?
No, that's, uh, that's, that was it.
Okay, all right, next, um, grants, Stan, we're gonna talk a little bit about a calendar, that sounds like a super duper. Hopeful setup.
It is, it is, uh, I've, uh. Started listing things out from the first of the year, I've got. All kinds of stuff for the middle of the year and it was helpful because it I found out there's, there are, uh, grants coming up. Uh, like D Trans grants, uh, in June, twenty fifth is the deadline for grants and aid applications being. Uh. And there was another one here, can't find it at the moment, but, uh, yeah, everything from the annual reports to the ARCA report, uh. Uh, the the, uh, the particular kind of grant that. You had brought up at the last meeting that was due the fifteenth, uh, that's a certain type of grant and.
Yeah, I think that was for anything over four foot, uh, diameter.
Um.
Falls under the structures, grant.
And anything that's greater than, I I think it's thirty six inches or more falls under the structures, can.
Yeah. Right, anything over thirty six inches.
Use hydraulic study.
It's a hydraulic study, it's involved state, you know, that that means big money and I didn't see this.
Okay. Right, right, so there were not obviously no grants that I was able to even given what our needs were, we we did, there was nothing we needed.
Yeah.
That needed to be filed by four fifteen, it's a term.
Yeah, I I talked to Archie about it, he felt the same.
Right. Greater, uh, he didn't answer my email, by the way, too, I didn't specifically bring that up, but I realized after the fact it applied, so I didn't bother to follow up with that.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, yeah, so what I'm gonna do for the, for for Mark's purposes, the select board's purposes, Archie's. Uh, and my involvement being involved in grants as well, is, uh. This is part of what I did today, I went through the orange book yesterday and today actually, and listed out those dates where things were due by. And the different categories, you know, the better back roads as a date, you know, and 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 so forth, so all of that will be here, um. Uh, let's see. And, uh, even the annual fee that will be coming up on the, the, uh, in June for the M R G P. Aspect of things, so even though we've done the form today, the certification, there's a fee due later on. And I also need to, along the way, I'm thinking the concept, I think the last meeting, uh, in an email that I had received from. Some gen- a gentleman at D Trans, um, his name, I think is Bill Ryan. And indicated that we were due two years, uh, for fees hadn't been paid. And Guy, as part of his duties as treasurer. Apparently hearing that, went in and looked for, and the paper that he gave dot. Uh, two Mondays ago, I think, had shown two payments being made, one in two thousand, uh, twenty twenty one. And one in twenty twenty, so the fees have been paid. And so it appears.
And then reported.
And they apparently the state isn't having. So I didn't have time today, given everything else, I was doing a deal with that, but as far as grants go and the ability to get grants.
Right.
I will see that the records are corrected so that that does not adversely affect our ability to get a grant and that can.
Yeah.
So, um, there are, I think there's two more times this year that we'll be able to apply for different grants. Uh, one is on September thirtieth for storm water and main high and main highway mitigation grants, the application's due by at the end of that month. And, uh, let's see, or something sooner. Uh, yeah, I mentioned six twenty five, so there's nothing within the next couple, three weeks that needs to be done, but, uh, I certainly. Probably at one of our meetings and may look to you and Archie for ideas on what might. Fit these other categories that we can look into and start preparing for.
Sure.
So, um, I think we're in pretty good shape, we now have a copy of the leaf blower grant, it's in it, it's two, three pages. Uh, very minimal and I will file that before I leave tonight in the the grant file. Uh, so it will now be there, uh, if I'm not mistaken. We're only gonna have two active grants, the South Sandshed, which is pretty much inactive now. And then this leaf blower and after that. Uh, we're done, there's two others in there, one of which I think was for Parker Road. And one of which was for Putney Mountain.
Yeah.
And and I need to follow up.
Those are done.
If we run a check, I need to ask each one of those if there's a closing process that we need to go through.
Yep.
Because they were in the active part of our tour, the, instead of being in the closed part of our tour.
Right. Yeah, I'm I'm unsure just how it closes other than. I guess to receive the payment, we had to have.
But the obligations.
Pay the documents, we need to be forth after.
And. Yeah.
Yeah.
And with the changes in the treasury department, there, things probably did not get processed from one side of the email.
Uh-huh, okay. So you think I should just move them back or check on it before I do?
I don't, you don't understand, let's do a no go on it, let's check on it.
All right, I wonder. Yeah.
Did you ever get a chance to speak person to person with Jeff Nugent?
He was a guy I spoke with on the leaf blower.
Okay.
And I spoke with him last week on another minute.
The only reason I say it is he was very involved with both of the Parker Road and the Putney Mountain.
Yeah, grants.
And I didn't know if he would be.
That would save me a word.
A person to give you that closure.
He'd be the one.
And just.
I'll thank him the second time for the leaf blower stuff and say bye away.
What are you saying about the closure of the two grants, would you?
Yeah, he would. I'm feeling he he would tell us.
Okay. I would do that.
Yeah. But that's great, that's huge, uh.
Yeah.
Thank you for all of that.
Yeah, no problem, I mean, it's 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 I get a good feeling here that we're we're, uh, know we got where we're going.
It's correct.
Very important. Making progress, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, if we're ready, we'll move on, might be able to get out of here, it's a normal, sort of close to schedule, um.
Yeah.
Uh, town clerk and treasurer's report, uh, oh, Guy Tans is not here this evening, but, um. I will email him if there was any things that the town clerk needs to do or report to us and he can do it in a written format if he's not going to come to meetings.
Uh-huh.
Um, that that's fine. Okay, and the treasurer's report, because right now, next I won't identify it, so select board chair report, um. Email from Gwen Tanza and Guy Tanza, so on April twelfth, received an email from Gwen Tanza. Uh, in summary, said that, um. Uh, let's see, I got it right here. Hmm. Oh, after, after some thought and soul searching, Gwen Tanza said in her email that she is resigning her position as a. Selectman for the town of Brooklyn effective immediately. Um, and Gwen has been with the select board for five or six years now, quite a while, um.
Oh, wow.
And so again, that's difficult, always, we already had the, uh, seat left over from David Jones when he retired from the select board at the end of his term. Gwen does still have some time left on the term or at least some time left on that particular term. And we need to talk about how we're going to reach out to the community to, uh, fill the select board term. Uh, on the following day, on April thirteenth, we received an email from, um, to the select board from Mr. Tanza with a letter of resignation. Resigning as town treasurer, delinquent tax collector, trustee of public funds. Wyndham Regional Commissioner and Town nine one one Coordinator. It also said he would no longer be monitoring the recycling bin or be available to take the select board meetings, so. That's why we have faculty leaving our select board meeting tonight, we'll have to talk a little bit more about that at another point. Um, as far as the recycling bins, I reached out to Dan Towler and he said since he does not come. This way on a regular basis, he thought we could do one of two things, one would be to put a sign up at the recycling with someone's phone number to call. To that the bins get full, or Mark, you would monitor it and call it in. Or we just have the recycling triple G ticket of every Thursday. Whether or not it needs to be picked up or not.
Well, the problem with that is, this is where Mr. Tanza comes in, because he gauged that. So I guess what you're saying, what we need to do is. Do the minimum, not the maximum, because we'll have to stuff all of this. That's the most, yeah. You follow them.
Sort of, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know what you're saying, I don't know what you mean.
Oh, what I mean is, you're saying every Thursday.
Either every Thursday, we have a or a phone number to for that somebody who seems to have to call or have Mark do it.
That's all okay. That's fine, but if you're just gonna do it automatic pickup every Thursday, I think what Guy was doing, I'm not sure. Was he was gauging it as to when it was.
He would go and look.
What?
He would look.
Right.
Yeah.
And sometimes I I think, I don't know, it was less, I'm not sure.
Correct, so the summer, in the summer, it happens faster.
It's in five minutes. Right, happens faster, so we're gonna have to be more diligent in that, they said we can't just do an automatic pickup every week on Thursday.
I wasn't sure if it was an assigned town clerk job that was given to God when we had it meeting here or not.
I don't know, he volunteered.
He volunteered for that.
I didn't call correctly.
Originally we thought, so Mark, is there a set of, uh, assignment that we can give to you that he would check midweek or twice a week and I give you the phone number, I tried calling him last week and I had already done it.
Okay.
But it's very simple, they're very nice to say.
Sure.
It's all comes warm.
Yeah, because you should maybe do it in the.
Sure.
So, thank you.
All right, so we will sign that to, uh, to to Mark.
Simplify that, thanks.
On the nine one one, the nine one one, I already looked that up and as I said before, that's something that I thought that I could do, yes.
I don't, if Mark should become ill. Or you want to take some time off.
Yeah.
Or for any reason, you're not gonna be around. Become ill or whatever, I I wouldn't mind, uh, assisting in that and just you saying, I'm not gonna be able to do it this late. And what, tell me when you've been doing it and and whatever you find and I'll be glad to to pick up that spot for you.
All right, that would be great, yeah, I think that, I think pretty much all of it.
It worked out well with Guy because he didn't handle it.
Yeah.
Yes, he's a good guy, he did.
You know, but, uh, I can, you know, he's he's doing a lot, he's overworked and. He did, he's a take a break, so, uh, it's, I can understand that.
Yeah, I.
Thank you for taking.
Uh, I've been monitoring, you know, the outside. Other issues left, I I've taken time back to the, uh, special garage, so I get a truckload, but, um.
Yeah.
I've been cleaning up so that I can use that as a.
Extra hour time.
Yeah, thank you for doing. Work with Stan and D Trans.
Yeah, not to get in your way, but just if you need a, need a backup, just let me.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Shoot that story.
Okay.
Hold it up the hill.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so it's a nine one one, the regional commissioner, so the trustee of public funds, it's a link with tax collector and town treasurer, uh, we go. Uh, we reached out, uh, with Guy's suggestion, uh, we reached out to Melissa Brown, who is the treasurer of Newfane. And, uh, she was already appointed as our assistant treasurer to work with Guy, but with Guy resigning, he suggested that she might be considered, and so Stan. Spoke to her, you wanna share what you?
Yeah, uh, she she is interested in the position. She does virtually everything, uh, from home. And was concerned whether or not we would allow that if it was a job that she decided she would want it. And, uh, I indicated there was a precedent for it, uh, already with other staff. And I'm sure that wouldn't be a problem. Uh, she offered it because this is a a smaller town. That was clearly a part time position. And, uh, you know, probably wasn't going to, uh, uh. Take an extended period of time to to get things done. I didn't, uh, think to mention tax collector or delinquent tax collector. Uh, I didn't ask and I haven't looked up if that is then something she's been doing over there.
To discuss that.
Uh, but those are, those are issues that we want in the discussions or enough and see how that that sets. But she, the, ba- based on her her tone and. Uh, being relatively flexible and, uh, Friday just happens to be her day off over there. And she only, she has the afternoon that she takes for herself and that she was wanting to come over, uh, sweet Friday at that point in time, but. Doesn't.
And she's already done the job someone.
Well, she knows it, she knows it, you know, full.
Oh.
You know, and and I got the impression she's, yeah, so it it sounds like there's a a ready solution. You know, Guy's selection of her to help is a great one.
Does she need an assistant of the June?
She can employ somebody else if she has to choose, yes.
Okay.
And and I have.
One of all of us.
And I have information with the statutes of the town, town treasurer and the tax collector. Uh, the town may vote to elect a tax collector who would collect all the current and delinquent taxes. So that could be part of the 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 process, um, so if you want.
Let me ask her where she's interested.
Okay, so we're gonna be with Melissa Brown on Friday at twelve thirty here in the conference room just to meet her and, uh.
You have a lot for the treasury. Twelve thirty.
Uh, see and let her pass some time and then I think that's what we're talking about, having a special meeting next week, um.
No, tell us.
Yeah, uh, we will have to. Special meeting requires twenty four hours notice and so I'm gonna still leave it open, I have a couple of important meetings and I can't figure out which day, which day on, yeah.
Whatever.
So they won't let them do that.
I just hope, I, yeah, if you're not gonna, I just hope you. Don't lose the opportunity.
Yes, correct.
I'm really, that's a good thing.
She's busy working with Newfane.
She's been there five years.
Five years, yeah.
Full time.
I wonder if she's considered the, uh, the other.
That's what we're gonna add.
Yeah, I think everybody asked you.
I know that, that's, uh. Oh, uh, administrated.
Well.
Well, she's got a full time job, but we might ask her if she knows of some, yeah, she's working full time as treasurer.
She mentioned she has children. And one of the reasons that she likes to work a lot when she can, is it it gives her presence with the kids.
Yeah.
You know, and and so she can kind of keep an eye on her self, you know, it's an interesting thought, but certainly, yeah.
She marries. Okay.
Yeah. But I I also was wondering, you know, if if ever that same subject could be part of the assistant. Town clerk, you know, with extra hours to be, uh, administrated.
Yeah, I'm remembering we ought to change the rules now.
Yeah, no, I just, it's.
Like that, yeah.
It, well, it it it, that's an interesting thought, my, uh, brief discussions with, um, our current assistant treasurer. Uh, is that she is of an age that it would not be something that she would probably want to take on.
Yeah.
She's not interested in that.
I mean, I I don't wanna speak for her, but, and I could be all wrong. But the impression I got was that, um, you know, we, she she, um. She she's wasn't with what she's got, got appropriately, she feels, and I think the 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 reference that was sort of made back when. A month or two ago was that, you know, it's the hours that she's working now works out well for her, you know, almost paraphrasing her. So I use that as a reading into it, but you never know.
It's advertised now, anybody can apply.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
All right, so we can move on, continue moving through here, so again, we have the resignation for, uh, everything September for by, which, uh. Will leave quite a bit of a hole in in us, so we will have to move move on and continue and of course, uh.
May I make a comment?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's standard operating procedure in situations like this to send a letter acknowledging the their movement, their action. And indicating, you know, our appreciation for those, what they have done in those roles and, uh, I I would like to. Move that we similarly, uh, do so with. Move that we similarly uh do so with with both Guy and Gwen.
Alright, I mean, uh so I'll second that motion for sending a letter of regret. Letter of accepting their resignation with regret from the select board and um. Let me get that out. I'll I'll CC everybody before I send it. I'll I'll mail, snail mail it. And if we have a meeting next week or Friday, we can suppose, we can all sign it.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll have a gift for Friday.
Okay.
And and you know, okay.
Yeah, I'll, that's enough said.
Alright, continue move on. Animal Control, uh I'm contacting dog owners and notifying them of their fines or lack of compliance to the ordinance. We'll continue along with that. The RFPs for the paving for due to the theme of storms forty-six point one and the paving area for grassy brick road was published on April sixteenth. And I sent letters to the past vendors with the RFP information. The bids are due Tuesday, May third uh by mail. Uh and they will be opened on May fourth during a regular meeting. Okay, and now we're up to Bruce, uh building commissioner.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm gonna tell you what's they doing and what I'm going to do. What's doing is Scott Paul had requested that we have the um. Order turned on to the church. It's been, should have been done yesterday, got the uh the low code to get in there and I have her back since. So assuming that that was done. Second, we just got a bill for two hundred dollars from Langwell for the servicing of a water system. And after spending clearly more than two thousand dollars the previous January of twenty twenty-one on this system. There's two hundred dollars in the back, eight dollars a month for um for filters is what it's cost us this year for that for that water system.
For filters and for salt.
Oh, the salt was eight eight dollars a month. And the filters are a part of this bill that he just gave, that he just gave us. And prior to that. Um I bought filters in March and we had some left. So basically, we haven't spent. Three to four hundred dollars in a year.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
Next one.
Yes. So so far, and again, this is Mark and I, when we when we serviced the building several weeks ago, we switched the UV system again. And started right up.
Thank you.
Right, right.
So it's, everything's going okay so far. Uh now, let me see, um. Alright, oh, uh Friday. I got an email today, iron's coming Friday morning, go ahead, go ahead. So hopefully. Be the end of any work that's done on that system. He said, really was having a difficulty wiring one of the area. Air air changers, I believe it's the one upstairs. Yes, it is, because I remember him complaining about it. So he's coming back Friday at nine AM to try and rectify that. At eleven AM. I'm meeting with Chris to have him look at the double boiler situation and in in preparation to give us a quote on what we're supposed to replace. Now I'm gonna be there to ask him certain some questions related to the efficiency and and our choices. Um. If we chose to go that route. Um. With respect to the mold that we had the issue with. Uh Mark had looked at it pretty closely and very, we we both agree pretty much we had a problem. Uh it's not bad at all, but. I pursued it a little bit and I happened to go upstairs and talk to Aaron for a few minutes because we talked about. The idea of getting it, we said dehydrator, but they already had one in there. And it had some water in it. So I went up there and talked to Aaron and she says, well, in the winter, not too bad, but in the summer, we could we could have to do a thing twice a day. And I know exactly what happened. When I built my home back in nineteen eighty-six.
Hundred percent.
Um we put the, we put the stone down. We put the ins, we put rigid board down. And we put plastic on top of it. And I guarantee the steps weren't fall for that floor. And it reminds me of my church because I had this happen up there once. Aaron used the quote, in the summer, it's like an ice cream, yeah, on that floor. So. Where where I'm driving driving at, she's got this little small dehydrator, maybe we should consider maybe. As a part of the artwork money, contribute maybe a dehydrate or out of the, out of Susie's budget money.
For the one dehumidifier.
The dehumidifier, I said dehumidifier, dehumidifier or two dehumidifiers based on how uh they perform in terms of square footage area. Um but that's obviously an issue. And that's probably just the beginning of mold. Uh cause it was leading to that. Where did it want to come from?
Right, I think some of the iron fixes also were involved. With you know.
You're talking about the heating.
Yeah, that was huge and neat.
Oh, yeah. Cause the third hit, Mark, wasn't even being used, you mean, that part of that wall wasn't even being used.
Yeah, you could feel the difference when you drill in the basement.
He's he's done pretty well. Okay, let me just take care of that. Um. Okay. I'm gonna try to see if I can tighten up the money thing that we talked about. About everything that was delayed to to build it by the fourth. I don't know if I can get it all quite great, but I'm trying.
No time.
But the, and and I was in a, the only rush that I'm in, I think I might got an answer to it. Was to get a commitment from Sue, a consideration. Let's put it that way. So this is what I've done. I called Tim Hart back from the, I was really having an issue, which issues were floating around here. So I called Tim Hart from the company that has the air air heat pumps and castle that Phil Allen gave the information to. So he could work up a quote that gave to us. So I basically have two separate quotes, one from an individual. Uh uh everything's subject to bid, of course, and they both, and I know that. Um. I also have an individual bid um from the a local electrician. Uh that basically works with FW Webb that went came to the building, did all the measurements, came back and came back with numbers. And they were noticeably different.
We don't wanna recite the numbers because we haven't gone out to bid.
I'm not. I'm not, I'm not. So I called Tim Hart back. And things started to come together. And basically what he said was, Phil Allen called him on a day and said, I need to have these numbers in four hours. And I started saying, what's wrong here? Something's not tight. And he was great, he was a nice man. Uh basically, what I'm doing for him, so this has a specific rundown. Is I'm gonna give him some pictures of the building, he had some, but it was. Not tight enough. He's gonna ask specifics about room size and everything. I don't believe he has. And we're gonna revisit. The not his 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 numbers of consumption, what what's needed for that building.
Shouldn't we just put it out to bid?
No, because we have to find that. Just put it out to bid. Well, you can. Sure you can go that route, but I think would be helpful to us to know where we think we're gonna be in terms of consumption. What we're gonna need for consumption, especially in light that we're we're considering a solar system in there. And in terms of um. Uh how much we're gonna considering to spend. I mean, do we wanna spend sixty thousand dollars on air heat or heat pumps? I mean, are anybody clocking things?
You know, we're not now on to you to find out.
I I know, but I have two that are mostly different. So I'm trying to analyze what the usage is. So this is what I.
Okay, I'll let you go.
So I'm going to get back in, it's gonna, we're gonna revisit that. Nothing's fine with this. So I said, well. The whole solar thing's a waste of time unless I get uh some kind of interest from Susie. So I called her. And she's meeting with, I said, can we have a little meeting like we had last time? She's over there. So I'm gonna go and talk to her like we discussed yesterday. Uh on on Wednesday at ten o'clock. Then. It occurred to me, I wasn't feeling comfortable with Phil Allen. And what I decided to do is think about it again. And if you remember, uh uh Stan, remember when the first time I cons- considered the of of when I called him? And he said to me, well, how are you gonna get the money? Do you remember that? What was it?
I I knew there was a discussion of money. I I unfortunately came in a little late, so the only evidence that I.
Yeah. Well, I I'm picking up signals. And that was bothering me. And what also bothered me is. In fourth, in eleventh page of his of his wonderful, beautiful layouts that he gave me. He said he'd have an answer about the quote in forty-eight hours it took him thirteen days. Okay, and then I'm thinking about all these things. That was in the back of my, and then the third thing was how he pushed. Tim Hart's representation of the situation. How he pushed him into getting to rushing him the quote for that building. Cause I asked him, Tim Hart, what do you know about the, what did he tell you? What did you know about the building? And it appeared to me that it. It's a little too sketchy. So I said, okay. Well, then I went back to square one and said, well, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call Susie, cause I'm wasting my time about solar panels. If I don't get her interested and think if she's interested in what we're gonna do. She was hoping to do it, so then we meet next Wednesday. So then I said, I sat back and I said, well. This guy's. This solar company set out all this information, everybody in the valley's got it all over the place and everything. I have a problem with any of that. I thought his presentation was brilliant, I thought his analysis was pretty good. But I still have some issues. So I said. I'm calling two more solar companies. So I called one today and there's another. I called Integrated Solar today, basically gave them some information, they're gonna. And I'm afraid that we're had, we're wasting, uh I I worry about.
These pre-bid readings. A pre-bidding.
Well, I have to find out. I get what they can do in terms of equipment. And and what we could do in terms to cover the consumptions. I mean, if you want me to stop all this, I'll stop.
No, no, but I'm just saying what I'm saying.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do very much.
That's twice, it's.
Yes. They they all know, they all dealt dealt with me this times. That they have to realize, everything goes out to bid. Every town that mentions. Whether it be the two people that we're talking about, the heat pumps or anybody. And of course, uh the solar company knows it, it's gotta be bid. I mean, you can, well, excuse me, that's incorrect. That's not a bid situation. Because that's not something that we might end up spending our money on, but that's something we can discuss. What I need to do is tighten it up a little better. And I wanna make sure that the companies that are trying to pre-interview the companies and get the 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 best background. Um.
Are are you doing, yeah, it.
Your question?
So you're not doing their job for them. What you're doing is.
No.
What I'm trying to figure out what it is that you're doing actually in terms of.
I'm getting them, come come up, take a look at the building and they're gonna give me an idea of what they can do.
Okay, okay.
I'm not doing it. The only thing I'm doing is giving, Tim, Tim Hart said, you know, I could come down and get the specs, but I can't do that for him. If push comes to shove and comes out to bid and he wants to tighten it up, you can come down to the.
Oh, expect him to come down and see it. And he's done doing a real good.
Yeah. Right, right.
Well, it absolutely, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This is, this is, to me, what they gave us is not real bid. It's against me. And I am, and I'm having a problem against them because there's the two that I've got are so far apart. It's it's. It uh requests me to try to under, requests me to understand how much would I need in that building? That I can tighten up what I think we're gonna be spending. That's only that. And as far as going forward, what we choose, of course, everything goes out out to bid.
I I have a sense, you know, that Guy is is touching on something that's very important and that's. Uh. It essentially what they are doing is providing a, they're looking at the building and so forth. Uh I think. It is a fine line to walk. You know, I don't know how, I'm I'm trying to sit here and make sense of it. And frankly, I'm just tired, so I'm not thinking as straight as I should.
And I'm feeling.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but um Guy, was that his name?
Yeah.
He told me that the camera didn't have problem with batteries, uh because you can't plug it in.
Yeah.
Um and it's about to die, so. I just figured I'd let you know because I don't want it to cut off the meeting. This is why we usually use our equipment, because we know what it can do. Uh but I'm just letting you know that this doesn't have battery life to go much longer, so.
Okay. I'm pretty much showing my actual, I still have a singular question in there. I'm gonna just try to find some answers and and get us a little bit more clarified as to what the needs are for the building.
You're looking for a better estimate, so that when we do an RFP, we can have a, we we can design our RFP more more professionally.
No, I I need an accurate accounting of that.
You're an estimate, you're looking for an estimate, you're not looking for a bid.
I'm not, I'm. No, I'm looking for an accurate accounting of what that building needs.
Okay.
How much water does it need? How much is those area uh or heat pump's gonna put out? How many of those do I need for each building? What it costs later.
I wanna get this.
Is it gonna match what we do now, cause I got.
I do wanna get this in.
Go, go further. Cause I'm not pretty much done.
Okay.
Yeah, I I'm glad that you're being so thorough in terms of making sure that what they're quoting and bidding on has the appropriate uh. Size, capacity, et cetera, et cetera.
That's on me. Uh. Cause I can figure the rest out, I don't.
Yeah, dollars and so on.
Stan, dollars.
You're that, you're at the board's check on their their work, essentially.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's basically what we're doing. Because I know what it costs for an area, but do we need two room, one room or what? Okay, I'm I'm pretty, I'm pretty much.
I'm gonna do pay orders at this time, just in case there's a problem with the camera. So I am going to make a motion to approve. Uh. From uh accounts payable checkmark twenty-two dash forty-one dated four twenty twenty twenty-two. In the amount of eight thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Second advice, Stan, uh any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant twenty-two forty-one for the amount of eight thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant. But this says check warrant report number sixty-three, which is numbered a little oddly, but. Check warrant number sixty-three dated April ninth, two thousand twenty-two.